Good afternoon, everybody, and I'd like to welcome you to the Orange County Legislature meeting for Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. And I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'm by standing, asking you all to please stand for a moment of silence. And I would ask that you remember with fond memories the passing of Dr. John Dambrosio. He was the former president and CEO of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce, and he was a tremendous asset to the small business community here in Orange County. And this will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that the clerk do the roll call, please. Vero?
Here.
Paduk?
Here.
Amo?
Here.
Benton?
Here.
Resha?
Here.
Cheney?
Here.
Fagion?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Kulusek?
Here.
Luhon?
Present.
Menuda?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Friskovich?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Sierra?
Here.
Steganga?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Tottel?
Here.
Tui?
Here.
Finelli? Twenty is present, one absent. Thank you. And we do have some public participation. Our first speaker is Rhonda Moore. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. I'm going to be talking on Resolution Number 44. I'm opposed to the grant of over $1 million for COVID-19 vaccine response. And I know that that's heresy. It's very, and because, and because, it's heresy because we're living in very perilous political times. To even talk about it is perilous. But I want to thank Representatives Fagion and Menuda for talking to me last time I was here after the meeting. And I believe their hearts are in the right place, and the problem is we have to take courageous action, and that's difficult. Mr. Menuda said he believes that this local body can do little as it is undermined by the supremacy clause. I disagree. You guys have got a lot of power, but it takes courage to use it. Take raw milk. The federal FDA bans the sale of raw milk, yet 10 sovereign states allow it, and 17 more states, New York being one of them, declares it's okay if you buy it at the farm. And the FDA can do nothing about it. That, my fellow Americans, is the 10th Amendment at work. The federal government has enumerated powers like the power to tax. The states get to take another bite, but local governments and we, the people, truly hold the reins. If, and it's the big question, if we take control of those reins. Legislative Menuda asked a tension question. Had any governments become constitutional jurisdictions? The answer is yes. The city of Oroville, California boldly declared itself a constitutional republic city on November 6th, 2021. Oroville can now opt out of enforcing any executive orders issued by the state or by the feds that are overreaching or violate constitutionally protected rights. They are taking on one mandate at a time, but then they have a lot to deal with in California, though we're not far behind. As a grandmother, it horrifies me that California makes kids take the COVID shot to attend school. Kids who have almost no chance of dying from COVID have a chance of getting injured by the COVID shot. Governor Hochul, when asked if she would mandate COVID shots for children, said that she is willing to consider anything. In our state, tens of thousands of healthcare workers have lost their jobs because of a mandate that aggregates their 14th Amendment rights. In our state, we also are denied the right to get a prescription filled for ivermectin, which is effective early treatment for COVID and one of the safest drugs in the world. Using an out-of-state prescription, I saw ivermectin return health to two of my own daughters. If we can overcome the FDA on raw milk, why not on ivermectin, a veritable life-saving medication?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Please conclude your comments.
People? Excuse me?
Three minutes are up. Please conclude your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Monroe, speaking on Agenda Item Number 44 as well.
Thank you. That is Maro.
Maro.
Michael Maro, yes. I too want to address Item 44 on the agenda, because I believe accepting state COVID-19 vaccine grants is, is wrong, and especially because it's so divisive amongst our citizens. As you well are aware, thousands of New York State healthcare workers have lost their jobs because they refuse to get the mandated COVID injection. These mandates are just bad science. A vax nurse can transmit the virus just the same as an unvaxxed nurse. This blatant discrimination violates rights guaranteed by our Constitution. What's more, it hurts all New Yorkers. Healthcare facilities across the state have closed their doors or reduced services. Recently, courts have found COVID vaccine mandates to be bad law. There have been one win after another in courts across the country. On Tuesday, a federal court put a stay on the federal mandates affecting federal healthcare workers across the country. The judge said that mandating a vaccine to 10 million healthcare workers is something that should be done by Congress, not an agency. Furthermore, he went on to say, "It is not clear that even an act of Congress mandating a vaccine would be constitutional." And on Wednesday, another judge said that the Department of Defense had no right to mandate experimental vaccines that are not approved. However, in New York State, the healthcare worker's mandate is still a fact of life. We've got the worst of bad science and bad law. Governor Hochul needed to address the dire state of the New York healthcare facilities. The perfect opportunity appeared last week with a new COVID variant found in South Africa. Even though the CDC said the Omicron variant had not been detected in the U.S., Governor Hochul used it as her excuse to put in place a new state of emergency. When will this ever end? Using the extra powers of state of emergency usually reserved for major catastrophes, Hochul has now suspended elective surgeries. The interesting thing here is that though there may be COVID cases, more testing, death reports in the state are almost nil. This is not new news. John Hopkins University claims a 99% survival rate to date. The vaccine mandates are not about health. So my question for you is what can this legislative body do in regard to these medical mandates? And the answer lies right here in my hand, which is your handbook. And it is the Legislative Manual for Orange County. And it says that a legislator must find, and I quote here, "an effective way of joining with his or her colleagues in official action concerning the clarification or easement of federal and state mandates." Note the use of the word mandates. I do not know when this was written, but it's very peculiar that that word is even in there. "Or other restrictions on local operations where such are deemed detrimental to local functioning," end quote. I would say that having insufficient staff at our hospitals surely qualifies as detrimental harm to functioning, wouldn't you? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maro. Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara, and I'm not going to try to attempt our last name from Port Jervis. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. So first, I want to say thank you to all the individuals that are in this room, because we are all part of Orange County, all of you and all of you. It is very important to remember that. These community members are just like you, community members in this county. But all of you are representing these constituents, these community members. My name is Barbara Marchalik. I am a family mental health nurse practitioner in Orange County in Port Jervis. I have my own practice there. I am speaking on points, Solutions 43 to 47, and I would like to know how you are living with COVID, living. How are individuals in this county able to get through what has already happened to them? With all the things that have happened to individuals in the hospitals with the vaccine, how are we living? How are individuals able to be neighbors and be friends with each other and family members? I have individuals coming to me on a regular basis, not just for mental health, but also with COVID, with full recovery, and many of them do not have the vaccine. I would like to work with our county and the Department of Health, as well as other medical and psychiatric practitioners, providers, prescribers, and to really understand what has been happening here in our county. I will also state that many individuals that I have treated in my career that have been on a boosting immune regimen prior to COVID did not get the COVID virus. These are statistics that need to be put out there. When an individual's immune system is built up, they can fight bacteria and viruses. I would also like to ask, where, if this money comes to this county, is it going to? Is it specific providers? Is it specific institutions? There are nearly, I think it's now up to 20,000 nurse practitioners in the state of New York, on top of an abundance of doctors, and it keeps growing. How are we participating in helping this county? I would like to know, because I would like to participate. I have been seeing patients, clients, on a regular basis here in this county, face to face. I see it in their faces. I see it in their eyes, the duress and distress and the emotional unhealthiness that has happened to them in this course. Please be mindful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes this public participation point of meeting, and I will move on to Majority Leader Vero.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of July 1st, July 21st, and August 5th, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there are no objections, Agenda Items Number 31 through 34 and 60 through the end of the agenda will be voted on collectively. Are there any referrals, withdrawals, or consents? Seeing none, we will move on to the agenda reports. Rules Special Investigative Committee report dated November 2021 received. Moving on to Number 1. Legislative Fagion, Resolution fixing date, time, and place of meeting to organize the county legislature in 2022 and to conduct certain county business pursuant to Section 151 and 152 of county law. This is a voice vote. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 2. Legislators Paduk, Amo, Cheney, Hines, Kulusek, Vero, Fagion, and all Republicans as cosponsors, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature addressing the safety concerns of kratom and requesting federal and state regulation of the substance. Any comments? Legislative Tottel?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've done some research on this substance, I'll call it, for lack of a better terminology. And I have one question is, as we see that it's been banned in other municipalities, is there anything that precludes us from not just calling for a study on this, but given the dangers that we already know exist, banning the sale of this in Orange County?
This has passed not only the opioid committee chaired by Legislative Sutherland, and I believe it went to the Rules Committee, to my knowledge. I believe that was questioned there, so I would refer to the two chairs if there was any research done on that.
It was not discussed, actually. It was something not in committee. We felt that starting here was the best way to go about handling the situation, and then if there was something further, further action that we wanted to take, we would do that at a later time.
So I will ask legal counsel, this is something that the committee could continue to pursue. This would be the first step.
Certainly, it is something that we can continue to pursue, yes.
All right. Thank you. I believe Legislative Menuda's hand was up.
I'm not finished, Madam Chairwoman.
Let me see if it's in reference to what you're speaking. Okay. You had a question, actually. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I did make that request. The understanding that I got back from it is that we don't have the jurisdiction to do that, and that it comes from the FDA.
Okay. So after, we will, we will take it up again in the opioid committee when it starts fresh in 2022. Hopefully, that satisfies your concerns, Lori.
It does. I just saw that it was banned in other areas and didn't know why we were precluded from banning it here. I couldn't, I couldn't understand that when I was looking at the other legislation from the other areas.
Okay. Totally understand. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Then I'm going to ask for the roll to be called. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Finelli? 20 ayes. Number 3, please. Legislators Vero and Kulusek, and all Dems as cosponsors, Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Attorney's Office to appropriate third-year budget period funds from the New York State Office of Indigent Legal Services.
Aye.
Any comments on this? This is a voice vote, so having no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. And we move on to Number 4. Legislators Fagion and Cheney, with all Democrats as cosponsors, Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 county budget for the Department of Planning.
Aye.
This is also a voice vote, or are there any comments? And I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 5. Legislators Kulusek and Fagion, Resolution approving the Transit Title VI program for the Department of Planning. Please add Legislative Tottel. Sierra? Any other comments? This too is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 6. Legislators Kulusek and Vero, Resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a host-agency agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation on behalf of the Orange County Transportation Council.
Aye.
Legislative Tottel added, as well as Sierra. Anyone else? This too is a voice vote. Any further comments? Call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 7 is a bond resolution, and this calls for a 2/3 roll call vote. Legislative Sassy, Cheney, Benton, Sutherland, Bond Resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of various capital improvements, including planning thereof to facilities at Orange County Community College, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $1,240,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $620,000 to be received from the state of New York, and authorizing the issuance of $620,000 bonds of the county to pay the balance of the cost thereof.
Aye.
Any comments? Legislative Luhon added. A Tottel added as well?
Please.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? All right. This is a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? And Finelli? 20 ayes. Number 8. Legislators Friskovich, Resha, Benton, and Sutherland, Resolution to allow the Orange County Department of Public Works to transfer capital project funds pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Aye.
Questions? Comments? All right. This is a roll call vote, so will the clerk please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? And Finelli? 20 ayes. Thank you. Number 9. Legislators Paduk, Menuda, and Benton, Resolution to allow the Orange County Department of Public Works to transfer funds from a fund balance to an operating budget pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Aye.
Questions? Comments? All right. Please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? And Finelli? 20 ayes. Number 10, please. Legislators Paduk and Menuda, Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Department of Public Works to grant a permanent easement in the village of Goshen.
Aye.
Comments? Questions? All right. This is too a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 12, please. Legislators Friskovich, Menuda, Hines, and Resha, Resolution increasing and confirming certain rates charged at Orange County-owned solid waste disposal facilities and amending all past resolutions setting previous rates. Any comments or questions? Okay. This is a roll call vote, so, oh, Benton, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No problem. I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Okay. So take the roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton abstaining. Resha? Cheney? Fagion?
No.
Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga?
Well.
Sutherland? Tottel?
No.
Tui? Finelli? 16 ayes, 3 no's, 1 abstention. Okay. Number 13, please. Legislators Tui, Menuda, and Benton, Resolution accepting a donation of a portion of real property in the town of Warwick from the Gables at Warwick, Inc., pursuant to Section 2153 of the county law.
Aye.
Questions? Comments? All right. We're going to take a roll call vote on this as well. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Finelli? 20 ayes. Okay. Number 14. Legislators Resha and Benton, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, with respect to the donation of real property in the town of Warwick, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Finelli? 20 ayes. Okay. We move on to Number 15, please. Legislators Resha and Benton, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, with respect to the replacement of Main Street Bridge Number 2 in the town of Cornwall, classifying the action as a Type 2 action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impact.
Aye.
Questions? Comments? Roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulusek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Friskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Finelli? I'm sorry. Legislators Cheney, Benton, and Heinz. Amending bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York amending the bond resolution adopted December 6th, 2018, and amended December 3rd, 2020 in relation to financing the replacement of county-owned Main Street Bridge Number Two in the town of Cornwall at the total estimated cost of $1,800,000.
Right.
Questions? Comments? All right, the roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number eighteen. Legislators Tui and Cheney? Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the replacement of Highland Mills Bridge in the town of Woodbury, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Totell would like to be added, as well as party leader Emo. Anything else? Okay. Roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, we move on to number nineteen. Legislators Tui and Cheney? Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the replacement of Highland Mills Bridge in the town of Woodbury, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Right.
Question? Look, legislator Totell added. Anything else? Mr. Emo? Legislator Emo? Added as well? Okay, please take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number eighteen. Legislators Tui, Cheney, Benton, and Sutherland. Amending bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York amending the bond resolution adopted October 1st, 2020 in relation to financing the replacement of Highland Mills Bridge in the town of Woodbury at total estimated cost of $1 million.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Totell would like to be added, as well as party leader Emo. Anything else? Okay. Roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, we move on to number nineteen. Legislators Tui and Cheney? Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the replacement of Highland Mills Bridge in the town of Woodbury at total estimated cost of $1 million.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Totell would like to be added, as well as party leader Emo. Anything else? Okay. Roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-two, please. Legislators Ruskovich, Breschah, Benton, and Menuda. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing contaminated soil cleanup at various Orange County locations stating the estimated total cost thereof is $50,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $50,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Excuse me? Legislator Totell added. Majority Leader Vero added. Anyone else? Okay. Please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes.
Katie, you have to move your car because, um, there's fire over here. They need to get into their store.
It's not mine.
I'm not moving it.
I really just.
Oh, yes, fine.
You were close. Thank you, David.
Sorry. Sorry.
We're going to take a very brief recess to allow minority leader Paduk to move his car. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start our meeting again. I apologize for the inconvenience. Uh, thank you, minority leader, for moving your car. We were just checking that some other cars may have to be moved, including mine. Uh, we have somewhat of an issue outside, so. But it is being handled. And I believe we are on number twenty. Legislators Menuda, Tui, Benton, and Breschah, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing contaminated soil cleanup at various Orange County locations stating the estimated total cost thereof is $50,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Right.
Questions? Comments? I think they're going to call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-two, please. Legislators Ruskovich, Breschah, Benton, and Menuda. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing motor equipment replacement for buildings and grounds stating the estimated total cost thereof is $140,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $140,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Excuse me? Legislator Totell added. Majority Leader Vero added. Anyone else? Okay. Please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-one. Legislators Menuda, Ruskovich, Benton, and Heinz. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing intersection improvements stating the estimated total cost thereof is $100,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Legislator Totell? Please be added. Stiganga as well? Anyone else? All right, thank you. Call the roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-one. Legislators Menuda, Ruskovich, Benton, and Heinz. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing intersection improvements stating the estimated total cost thereof is $100,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I think they're going to call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-two, please. Legislators Ruskovich, Breschah, Benton, and Menuda. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing motor equipment replacement for buildings and grounds stating the estimated total cost thereof is $140,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $140,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? And Benelli? Twenty eyes. Okay, number twenty-two, please. Legislators Ruskovich, Breschah, Benton, and Menuda. Bond resolution dated December 2nd, 2021. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing motor equipment replacement for buildings and grounds stating the estimated total cost thereof is $140,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $140,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Right.
Questions? Comments? Legislator Stiganga added. Anyone else? All right, please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulisic?
And these are the applications of corrections for tax rolls in various different towns. And it's going to be voted on collectively. Any questions or comments? Okay, so then we're going to do a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motions are carried. And we move to number 35. Legislators Fagion, Sassi, Sierra, and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Department's of Probation and Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to submit grant applications to the United States Department of Justice, Homeland Security, and New York State Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, and Transportation for Law Enforcement, Public Safety and Emergency Services Communication purposes pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Right.
Questions or comments? Legislator Tuwi to be added. Stiganga as well?
Yes.
No, we have to do it each one individually because it's roll call. Yes, but thank you for trying to make it easier. Anyone else? Legislator Sutherland? Anyone else? Okay. So we're going to do the roll call vote for number 35. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 36, please. Legislators Sassi, Fagion, Sierra, and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Department's of Probation, Social Services, Mental Health, Medical Examiner's Office, and Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to submit applications for grant programs offered by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services pursuant to Section 99-H of the general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Right.
Legislator Stiganga added. Tuwi added. Anyone else? Sutherland added. Okay, please take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, number 37, please. Legislators Fagion, Sassi, and Sierra, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Right.
Questions, comments? Sutherland added. As well as Stiganga, Tuwi, and did I see him? Luhan, was that you? Oh, okay. Please take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, moving on to number 38. Legislators Sutherland and Tortell, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Department of Social Services to enter into an intermunicipal agreement between the County of Orange and the Village of Goshen.
Right.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, please take the roll. All Republicans, please. Sierra added, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, number 39. Legislators Tortell and Sutherland, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Department of Social Services to add additional funds to an intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
Questions or comments? Please take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 40, please. Legislators Tortell and Vero, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Social Services.
Right.
I'd like to call upon legislator Tuwi, who is the Chair of the Human Services Committee, to say a few words about this particular item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen Smith worked for the Department of Social Services for over 30 years. Her last 20 years, she supervised our multidisciplinary team, MDT, including child protective services, law enforcement, and mental health that responded to the allegations of physical and/or sexual abuse against children as well as child fatalities. She was a leader and a mentor for many of their staff, a savior in the lives of many children and a beautiful friend. Her husband Mark and daughter Megan wanted to honor Karen's commitment to the children she served and colleagues she respected by receiving donations in her name to the Orange County Child Advocacy Center, the place where the MDT now work together to meet with children and their non-offending families to interview and support them in child-friendly and trauma-informed environment. Our hearts go out to Margaret and Megan and their loss. These words, unfortunately Commissioner Miller couldn't be with us today, and she requested that we can remember Karen in this way.
Thank you, legislator Tuwi. Any further comments? I'm going to call the roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 41, please, and this is a voice vote. Legislators Luhan, Tortell, Benton, and Paduk. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 county budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Right.
Any questions or comments? Since it is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 42, please. Legislators Tortell, Luhan, Benton, and Menuda. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 county budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Right.
This too is a voice vote. Any questions or comments? I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 43. Legislators Luhan and Tortell. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Department of Health to accept interfund revenue pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Right.
Any questions or comments? This is a roll call vote, so I would ask the clerk to take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Thank you. Number 44, please. Legislators Luhan and Tortell. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health.
Right.
Questions or comments? Then I'll ask you to take the roll, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, and Benelli. Twenty ayes. Thank you. Number 45, please. Legislators Tortell and Luhan. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health.
Right.
Questions, comments? Legislator Kulasek, was that your hand up? Okay. All right. We'll go to the roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 46, please. Legislators Tortell and Luhan, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health.
Right.
Stiganga added? Anyone else? Sierra added. Take the roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 47, please. Legislators Tuwi and Tortell, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to appropriate second-year budget period funds from the New York State Department of Health.
Right.
Questions or comments? Legislator Stiganga added. Anyone else? Take the roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, and Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, number 48. Legislators Stiganga and Cheney, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution designating Orange County Tourism as a tourism promotion agency of Orange County.
Right.
Questions, comments? All in. Sorry, it's a roll call. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Moving to number 49, please. Legislators Menuda and Stiganga. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Historian to accept and appropriate grant funds from the William G. Pomeroy Foundation.
Right.
Luhan added. Tortell added. Anyone else? Kulasek. Legislator Fagion would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just encourage all my colleagues to vote and support this resolution. Throughout Orange County, throughout New York State, are these beautiful historical markers. They tell the story of where we live and who lived here before us. They're great. I encourage everyone to not only enjoy them in your communities, but also volunteer with your local town historian in restoring them and keeping them happy and healthy. We've done that in the town of Deer Park. Our town historian, her name is Norma Shat. She probably getting mad at me right now. She's my neighbor, but she's 87 years old, and she's finally decided that she's going to step down as town historian. And she and I have been working on a project for the last year where we have washed and repainted our historical markers in the town of Deer Park. And our little effort has caught on. In the city of Port Jurvis, the mayor, he's decided that he was going to volunteer and restore his markers as well. So if anybody wants some help in your community, let's get out there and clean up these historical markers and tell the story of America. So I encourage everyone to support this and keep history alive here in our county. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, legislator Fagion. And anyone else? So we're going to do the roll call on number 49. Vero?
Yes.
Vero? Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, and Benelli. Twenty ayes. Thank you. Number 50, please. Legislators Stiganga and Menuda. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Youth Bureau to accept and appropriate funds from the Friends of the Orange County Youth Bureau.
Right.
Legislator Tortell added. Luhan, would you like to be added as well?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, let's do the roll call. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, and Benelli. Twenty ayes. And we move on to number 51. Legislators Sassi and Menuda, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Youth Bureau to accept additional funding from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services.
Right.
Questions, comments? Luhan, would you like to be added?
I am ready for that one.
Oh, please feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's no surprise to many of you who have been reading the news in the last couple of weeks about the recent surges in gun violence in the city of Newburgh. And while those occurrences are based on so many different challenges that we're undergoing as a community, this takes one step in the right direction to try to make sure that we're supporting our youth. And so I'm very, very proud to see that we are doing this, and I encourage everyone to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's just let you move on. Majority Leader Vero added. Sutherland added. Tuwi added as well. Okay, take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 52, please. Legislators Benton, Stiganga, Luhan, and Tortell, with all Democrats as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create 13 public health fellow ones and three public health fellow twos at the Orange County Department of Health.
Right.
Questions or comments? Legislator Luhan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last month, we actually approved, I think it was a little over $4 million for these positions. And I want to just reiterate that these positions are going to be a huge support to our Department of Health. I supported it then when we voted for it for the grant, and I definitely enthusiastically support it now, and I encourage everyone here to do the same. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments, legislator Luhan. All right, let's do the roll call. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, number 53, please. Legislators Benton, Fagion, Stiganga, Riskevich, Luhan, Tortell. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to reallocate, abolish, and create various positions at the Orange County Department of Residential Healthcare Services.
Right.
Questions or comments? All right, we'll take the roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number 54, please. Legislators Stiganga, Riskevich, Fagion, Sassi, Sierra. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create executive assistant district attorney with the Orange County District Attorney's Office.
Right.
Questions, comments? Legislator O'Donnell, please.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I'll be voting no on this resolution. The first time it was brought to us in this chambers, it eventually got tabled, and one of our legislators actually questioned the district attorney on it and got verbally assaulted by him that day. When it was brought back to committee, I'm pretty sure it passed unanimously at committee. It wasn't at the committees, but the DA again chastised the committee members that six times previously we had approved other promotions within the district attorney's office, which brings me to my main point. All right, so back in '88 and '89, the county did what was called a HAYES study, where we studied every employee's benefit package, their salaries. It was based on basically four items: knowledge, problem solving, accountability, and working conditions. And it's a system that works on integrating those four disciplines. And then that stood till '03. In '03, we did a Conry study, which is very similar to the HAYES study, where it establishes pay grades for all of our employees based on market average. So this particular resolution, to me, is just a way to get around our established limits on pay grades. All of our pay grades within the county have a beginning salary and a top salary. This is one way to get around that by increasing their grade. All right, so that's one of the reasons I'll be voting no. But I hope in January, I'm assuming we'll have the same chairwoman as chair, but whoever is put in charge of personnel and compensation, I think it's time for us to do another study. And that way, we don't have to have these resolutions come before us where people like myself or other legislators question, is that person really at the end of their high salary, or is this someone that is getting a pay raise and maybe someone else isn't getting a pay raise? This just levels the playing field for everybody. And the fact that we did it six times before, and I'm not picking on the district attorney's office for this, because there's other departments that have also abused this type of system, where they reach their limit, and then they come to us, and the only way they can reward good working people in the most part is by increasing their pay grade. So I urge my fellow legislators, come January, and whoever's chair of personnel and compensation, to allocate funding to do another study, so everybody can be on the same level playing field. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, legislator O'Donnell. Are there any further comments? Okay, hearing done. I will call the roll call. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Hines, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwi, Benelli. 19 ayes, one no. And moving on to number 55, please. Legislator Benton. Resolution finally adopting the proposed budget of Orange County for the year 2022 pursuant to Section 360 of the county law and Section 4.07 of the Orange County Charter and Section 4-12 of the Administrative Code. Questions, comments? Legislator Tuwi would like to be added. Minority Leader Paduk, would you like to be added, or you wanted to say something? Please feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These past few years have been a challenge for all of us as county legislators, including financially, mentally, and physically. Yet through God's grace, we've made it through these troubled times. Today, we are voting to approve a budget that has no tax increase on the taxpayers. I'm really happy about that. However, it is important to realize that this is only happening because our county executive was allowed to address the legislature on the last day that we make our final changes to his proposed budget, which included a $2.5 million tax increase. His unprecedented proposal, when we were about to approve his budget with the increase he originally proposed, is troublesome to me. We all had an opportunity to reduce taxation during our review of his proposed budget. I, myself, made many proposals that would have reduced taxation by over $3 million while not trying to micromanage our departments. I had the support of my Democratic colleagues, but not one of my Republican colleagues. Yet today, after having no support to reduce taxation during our legislative budget hearings, we will be voting to do just that, because our county executive realized that he should have done it himself before the legislature's review. The reality is, with the realization of a $33 million increase in sales tax revenue for the year, we surely could afford it. In fact, we could and should have had a tax decrease. I'm very concerned that one party rule is affecting our ability to govern as a team. So I look forward to positive change with new leadership and a more equitable form of government for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Minority Leader Paduk. Legislator Hines?
Yeah, the county exec did come to us, but he came to us as a group when we were about to take a vote, and when, I just have to correct the record, we weren't about to raise taxes. This legislature would have done just what the county exec had suggested, because we spoke to him before the meeting, and I can assure you that would have happened anyway. What happened was, when the executive branch made their budget, they didn't know that the sales tax was going to be through the roof, because we were very conservative when we set last year's numbers, because we didn't know where we'd be with COVID with respect to the economy. So that's why we had additional cash, and that's why we were able to pass this budget with no increase to the taxpayers. But this legislature would have done it if he didn't suggest it anyway. It just made sense in his mind, I guess, that he would come to us and make a suggestion. He didn't alter the budget at the last minute. We did. Only we could have done it at that point. So this legislature altered the budget, and the county executive and his staff agreed with that adjustment. I just wanted to clear the record. Thank you.
Legislator O'Donnell?
Just some further clarification on that. All right, so both of them are correct in some of what they say, I mean, in legislator Hines and minority leader Paduk. The fact is that the legislature was going to reduce the increase in tax rate, all right, of $2.5 million. That was discussed prior to our meeting. It was agreed upon. That probably was going to be a unanimous vote. Most of us here did not know that the county exec was going to come and speak to us before that vote. So he basically beat us to the punch and made the recommendation ahead of us, but at any rate, the taxpayers won. All right, it was reduced to a zero county increase instead of, I think it was 1.6. I could be wrong on that, but anyway, it was voted to bring it down to zero, which was only 2.5 million out of an 800 million-plus budget. So those are the facts, as I recall, but anyway, the citizens won. Thank you.
Very well said, legislator O'Donnell. Just to add to that for further clarification, with the process, as legislator Hines said, the county executive starts working on his budget springtime. And by the time October rolls around, that's when we get the budget and we start looking at it. And we also meet, and the only reason I'm adding to the conversation is that I feel an important component is that we meet with our auditors. They review the budget, and they come and they give us this advice. And that was the advice we, as a legislature, received from the auditors. And it just so happened that we were all on the same page, and as legislator O'Donnell, the taxpayers won out, so as we all did. So I just wanted to clarify that, but I appreciate everybody's comments, so. Legislator Menuda has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This only goes to underscore the importance of tourism and sales tax in our county. The more we generate from others, the less we have to take from ourselves.
Any other comments? Majority Leader Vero? Be happy to. We're going to call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Imo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Okay, moving on to number fifty-six, please. Legislator Benton, resolution making appropriations for the conduct of the government of Orange County, Orange County Social Services District, Orange County Sewer District Number One, the Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Cromline Creek and the Beaver Dam Lake District for fiscal year 2022. Comments, questions? Majority Leader Vero? Okay, let's call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Imo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number fifty-seven, please. Legislator Benton, resolution providing for the raising of taxes required by the Orange County budget for general government purposes, social services district purposes, Orange County Sewer District Number One purposes, Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Cromline Creek purposes, and Beaver Dam Lake District purposes, and levying taxes pursuant to section three six zero of the county law, section nine zero zero of real property tax law, and section four point zero eight of the Orange County Charter and Administrative Code. Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Majority Leader Vero, please be added. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Imo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number fifty-eight, please. Legislator Benton, resolution adopting the 2022 capital program as amended pursuant to Orange County Charter section four point zero seven. Questions or comments? Please take the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Imo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty ayes. Number fifty-nine, please. Legislator Benton, resolution making appropriation to Cornell Cooperative Extension Association of Orange Counties pursuant to subdivision eight of section two two four of the county law. Questions? Legislator? Riskevich? Cheney added as well, Luhan added, Tortel added, Stiganga, Sierra. Anyone else? Okay, one wants going twice. We're going to call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Imo?
Yes.
Benton, Bresch, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulasek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty ayes. We now move on to vote collectively on numbers sixty through seventy-one. And these are all of the tax resolutions. So does anybody have any questions or comments on these? I guess we're going to, this is, this is a voice vote, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motions are carried. The desk is clear. We do have some public participation. Just bear with me for a moment. For informational purposes, we have seventeen speakers signed up. And the first one is Ron Abord.
I wanted to just finish what I was trying to say to you. That basically, I left off by the fact that the.
If you're going to speak about the things that you spoke about before that were agenda items, this really is like taking advantage of the system. So I would, I would make sure that you.
You want to speak about something else, okay?
Fine, that's perfect, thank you.
That is that what you see here is, I think, kind of unusual for this body. People keep coming here because they're worried and they're concerned. And we want to talk to you guys. But this is not the venue, is it, really? We really want to talk to you legislators and pick your brains, hear what you have to think about government, hear what we're concerned about, see what we can do, make a better situation for what we believe is happening in this state. And my suggestion is that instead of coming to you and pestering you here with this three-minute dialogue and this attempt to get our ideas to you, which are against maybe the mainstream media and what people are thinking of as the general consensus of ideas, which may or may not be true, how about a town hall meeting where you guys come to us and we can talk to you people and ask you what you think about this, that, the other thing, and what we have concerns about? This is a very difficult time in history. It might be a totally a historic moment that we're living through. Our rights have been abrogated. The Fourteenth Amendment has been abrogated for certain. And this state government has been extremely, extremely, as far as I'm concerned, very, very autocratic and overreaching. And so my suggestion is that we pick a date. I could say, let's take January eleventh, when we pick a town hall meeting, and I'd like to know who here would like to meet with us, all these people who want to talk to you. We don't want to come here and spend three minutes trying to explain ideas we may have, which may be foolish, constitutional county, what other ideas may be coming up, to discuss with you why we're concerned. This county is one of the counties here that people are suffering. There are nurses and nurse practitioners who've lost their jobs because of these New York state mandates. This is not right. And so when you're taking money from the state in huge sums, like millions of dollars, to do their bidding, we want to talk to you about it. I think we have a right to. I do not know the best way to handle the problems that are facing us.
Thank you, Ms. Gork, the time going on.
But January eleventh.
Appreciate your comments. Michael Morrow?
Yes, thank you. Last month, I spoke to this body and I addressed the body and commended Mr. Bresch and Fagion who sponsored a resolution opposing the vaccine mandates. I failed to mention that Minority Leader Mike Paddock was also a co-sponsor on that resolution. So I wanted to apologize for that oversight, Mike, and commend you for being, for your bipartisan effort. Especially considering your own personal grief in losing your beloved wife to COVID. You were able to rise above it and seek to protect and ensure, and in your own words, people's God-given rights, specifically the right to individual choice. Thank you again, sir, for that. That being said, on behalf of my fellow constituents, I implore this body to reconsider this resolution opposing vaccine mandates and to bring them to the floor of this chamber for a vote. Especially with the many higher court decisions, even them unconstitutional. And lastly, I earlier mentioned your legislative manual. I have it right here, it's found on page two dash five, section E, item three, if you want to consult that on your own. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Donna Paglia? Donna Paglia? Is Donna here? Right, we'll move on to the next one, Patricia Dos. Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm your boss, and I really don't like what you guys are doing, because you guys are giving money out to all kinds of things. You never asked us, at election time, if you don't do what we want, you're fired. Thank you.
I see that Barbara from Port Jervis, and I'm not going to try to say her name wrong, but here again, and Barbara, please make sure that, since you spoke before, this is something totally different.
So this conversation is about the concern for our children. The concern is, is as I'm looking at our Orange County site and all the numbers, the statistics, and the science, what I've noticed is that the COVID cases actually were in fact decreasing. And I would like for all of you to actually scroll through that site, our site, your site, because we get so busy every day with everything that we're dealing with, we actually don't look at what is happening on a daily basis, and then on a weekly, and on a monthly, and on a yearly. But I do. And what I noticed during that time was that there was a stabilization period. That stabilization period with the COVID cases was between April and November 2020. From November to this November, so November 2020 to November 2021, our cases here in Orange County have abruptly increased. That is also when the vaccine has been pushed to the maximum here in our county. I can speak more about Port Jervis, because I live in that city, and I've resided in Orange County for two decades. What I've noticed there over the summer is that Port Jervis had the lowest incident of COVID cases, with the lowest incident of individuals receiving the vaccine. In the summer, there was only 29%, if I'm not mistaken, that had received the vaccine, and we still had the lowest amount of cases. And then all of a sudden, there was a push and an increase. And all of a sudden, we had an increase in cases. Again, I ask for individuals to be mindful and to pay attention to the numbers, to the math, and to the science. Because what is happening is the true science, the true math, is somehow getting pushed away. What I want to say also about that is that collectively, all this information is on Orange County's website. And we could all see it, including all of you and all of these individuals sitting behind me. And they're doing their homework, and they're looking at all of this. I want to also put out there about the VAERS, the open VAERS reporting. It is something that we here in America have been using for thirty years. Thirty years of reporting vaccine adverse reactions. And a lot of this happened because of things like individuals concerned about autism. Please be mindful.
Just conclude your comments.
So just to be mindful that this reporting data everyone should be looking at, and the CDC does use it as well. The numbers are horrific. Just pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Ivy Meckton, followed by Jose Matos.
Good evening. Just a little entertainment and salvation. So get your popcorn, imagine you're at the movies, and it's your favorite film, a Bond film. Straight away, a fat creepy villain named Augustine Carson from the Bank of International Settlement rolls out a plan to enslave humanity through central bank digital currencies, or CBDCs. He wants to issue a biometric ID, also known as a green pass or vaccine passport. He and his cronies conspire to roll out a worldwide pandemic. They will shut down all small businesses. Only publicly traded businesses remain open. Travel will come to a halt, schools and churches closed, essential liquor stores stay open. After a time when enough fear has changed the psyche of humanity, life can go back to the new normal. However, in order to reopen safely, they must have a vaccine and a vaccine passport to determine who is safe to move about freely for travel, a concert, public transportation, and to buy food and medicine. This passport will help end the pandemic, but you must get boosters for life. Many are sick and dying from the vaccines, but clever Mr. Villain blames it on the unvaccinated. And to cover the ever-increasing injuries, Mr. Villain takes over the airways and announces a more deadly variant. He orders the governor of New York to declare a state of emergency. No elective surgeries in hospitals. But behind the scenes, we see those beds are for those having strokes and heart attacks from the vaccines. You dig into the popcorn, glad it's only a movie, and in ninety minutes, it's over. You leave and walk down the street and take a sigh of relief. Then you see the headline from the paper on the newsstand, "Report from the American Heart Association: Risk of Developing Acute Coronary Syndrome Increased Significantly in Patients After Receiving the mRNA COVID-19 Vaccines." Then another article about pro athletes dropping down on the field after being vaccinated. You recall overhearing a neighbor talking about the young daughter paralyzed after getting her vaccine. Suddenly, you have an epiphany. That movie is your life, and Mr. Villain is real, and he's coming after you and your family too. You admit to yourself, you don't recognize the America you grew up in. Freedoms have been eroding for some time. The Constitution has been dying a slow death. But what can you do? Through entrapment and social media, you've grown so comfortably numb. Then that voice you heard as a child comes to you. Pray, seek divine guidance, be still and know. Clear and hear God, find an unwavering strength that can give you an eternal fortress against these malevolent forces. Because those who do nothing claiming they don't have authority are enabling mandates and executive orders and injuries and deaths to come and will be held accountable in some jurisdiction, never more so than in the eyes of God. What you do in this life follows you in death, for it's not the end. And when you die, I hope God sees you as a freedom fighter who went against the grain to preserve the sanctity of life and liberty. God knows our forefathers had a courage and fortitude almost supernatural compared to the impotence and feeble nature of men and women today. Awaken the period of enlightenment within you that brought us the sacred covenant, the United States Constitution. If we fail to restore liberty, there are no allies coming for us. We were the allies. May God give you all the courage and strength to fight the tyranny that we are under.
There you are.
Hi, thanks. I'm going to actually play a video before, so if I could just kind of tee it up. I wanted to also thank Legislator Menuda for getting back to my sister-in-law and recommending that we bring not just a problem, but a solution. So I'd like to just kind of offer, a potential solution is to bring this information before the Health Committee and do everything in your power to write a resolution to not allow vaccine mandates for children five to eleven and even adults. So this is the FDA Advisory Board meeting, and this is them discussing the, how they do not know the long-term side effects and the great concerns that they have for the five to eleven-year-old population. So just take a listen.
The real story here is watching this committee deliberate on the safety, the effectiveness, do the benefits outweigh the risks? That's what they were voting on. Let's just listen, we're going to go right to these videos and audio of the conversations happening. So the first clip here is Dr. Cody Messier. He had a lot to say about this, including his worries about it being extended to school. Take a listen.
Okay, the issue is side effects or adverse events that might be occurring after this vaccine. And we simply don't know what the side effects are going to be. We don't, for example, it's not even clear that this vaccine will reduce rates of transmission. We're hoping that's the case, but we don't know. This vaccine is probably not going to prevent infection. It's going to prevent severe disease. But to give, I'm just worried that if we say yes, that the states are going to mandate administration of this vaccine to children in order to go to school. And I do not agree with that. I think that would be an era at this time until we get more information about the safety.
So he was worried that it's going to be a blanket to get into school for all kids. So minutes, literally minutes after the vote was taken, the headlines started coming out. We saw this Reuters, this is the headline you would see if you were on Twitter or if you were on the mainstream news. "The Pfizer COVID vaccine is safe and effective for elementary school children, according to the FDA." Why is this fake? Well, this is fake, this is misinformation. I'm getting tired of pointing out misinformation from the people that label us as misinformation, but here we go. The FDA did not say it was safe and effective, their advisors did. Now let's listen to another voting member, Dr. Michael Corolla. He's actually the director of NIH's Division of Clinical Innovation. He abstained, by the way, listen to his comment, check this out.
And while the benefit here is assumed to be prevention of severe disease, which is what we're all hoping for, my, one concern I have is that particularly for that population that has, of children that has undergone previous, has experienced a previous COVID infection, which CDC estimates is 40% of this population, which I think is probably a floor, I think it may actually be higher than that. The question.
The question really becomes, does this vaccine offer any benefits to them at all? Are they actually very well protected? And the other aspect here is for children who have undergone, for example...
Include your comments. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to bring this to their attention and was, you know, just hoping that you would bring it before the committee. I mean, there's, if anybody would like to, you know, this is the FDA Advisory Board admitting they do not know the long-term side effects. I don't think anybody here would willingly put their children at risk and give them something that they're not knowing the long-term side effects. But anyway, thank you.
Yes, Yazo.
We are requesting all the legislators here to stand up to stop the proposed mandate of vaccine for children to attend school.
Yes.
The state bill that's proposed, eight through eight three seven eight. The number of children needed to vaccinate is so high, they need to vaccinate 9,000 to 100,000 to prevent one death. 100,000 children mRNA vaccinated, the side effects would be so high. Mike Eadon from former Pfizer CEO says for every one child with COVID, 100 will die from the vaccine. There are 67,000 school students in Orange County. One in every 3,000 children will get myocarditis. According to Israel VAERS, increased risk of heart attack, one in every 2,500 will have blood clotting, fatigue, 22 cases of myocarditis. That would be in Orange County. 22 cases of blood clotting in Orange County with our children. Or more, or more. This is VAERS, okay, from Israel. 1,100 cases of COVID in Orange County right now, right? There's 400 zero to 24-year-olds in that count. Okay, they have a 99.9 recovery rate. On the Health Department's site, why are you all so concerned about how many cases of COVID there are in Orange County, but you're not concerned about how many children will get serious side effects and reactions from mRNA COVID shot, which has never been used on the population? And everyone should know that. Out of these cases in Orange County, 400 kids that will recover, 99%. How many of these cases are false positives with no sickness and quarantined from school? 385,000 people in Orange County, 1,100 cases is 0.0028% of our population. So how is this a state of emergency? How? To mandate anyone, to mandate anyone to be forced to get an mRNA COVID vaccine, VAERS data, 20,000 vaccinated deaths so far and 500,000 adverse reactions. Orange County Health Department, Irene Gelman and the epidemiologist Jacqueline Lawler's job is to investigate patterns and causes of disease and injury from vaccinations. What are they doing about it? Where is it reported in Orange County? Where? It's nowhere for the people, us, to see or you. You should be concerned. We all should be concerned. So we want all you legislators to research all the data, all of it. Why not? We want you all to bring this data to committee for discussion, especially James O'Donnell and all seven on the Health Committee. You can't say you don't understand.
Thank you for your comment.
Can't say you don't understand and it's your full responsibility to research and protect Orange County public.
Maria from Florida. I'm not going to attempt your last name, Maria, so I apologize.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm a registered nurse, so I am speaking on behalf of nurses and many of them have lost their jobs because they don't want to put something foreign into their body that has not been tested appropriately. But I'm here to mainly talk about remdesivir. Remdesivir is the cause of a lot of the deaths that have occurred in the hospital. You know, basically, since COVID started, we have been treating cases. We've been paying too much attention to the PCR tests, which do create a lot of false positives. Remdesivir, on the other hand, that is a medication, it's an antiviral drug, given intravenously, and every patient that gets admitted to the hospital is put on that. Sorry about that. Dr. Fauci knew clearly that remdesivir was not a safe medication to use. It causes nephrotoxicity, which is causing renal failure with our patients, pulmonary edema, congestive heart failure, sepsis, multi-organ failure and ultimately death. A lot of our patients died because of remdesivir. When Dr. Fauci, when they were studying this drug against Ebola with three other medications, there was a 54% death rate. That was the highest of all four medications that were studied. Yet, he and the NIH chose to use remdesivir, knowing full well it was dangerous. Granted, they didn't know what they were dealing with COVID, but COVID is a 99.9% chance of recovery. Since when have we overreacted and knee-jerk reacted in the way that we have concerning this virus? We have gone too far. Talk about overreach. We have killed these patients. And what happened to first do no harm? Do you talk about the death rates and you're worried about the death rates? Stand up and do something about it. Medications like ivermectin and hydrochloroquine work. I am living proof of that. I'm almost 60, which I really shouldn't be saying that in public, but I am almost 60. I have asthma and I did come down with COVID back in April. I did receive doctor prescribed hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. I'm here to tell you it works. I was sick for three weeks. I had an upper respiratory infection, used my inhalers, and I'm here to tell you it works. It's safe. They've been around for 60 years, well-studied, well-documented. Please stand up. You guys have the power to change this. We don't have to sit under this tyranny anymore. You know, we are losing our rights. We are losing our privileges as citizens. It has to stop. You know, if you take a look at Germany, in Berlin, police officers are going into restaurants. Show me your papers. I want to see your passport. Doesn't that remind you of 1933? Didn't we learn from history? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. James Snyder. James Snyder, followed by Deborah McGrath.
James Snyder?
James Snyder.
The inalienable rights granted to us by our founding fathers and U.S. Constitution are being violated by mandates and policies that are being foisted upon us by those who we, the people, have elected to uphold and defend those inalienable rights. Instead, we are being discriminated against simply because we have chosen to not participate in this vaccine mandate. This mandate is an act of treason. Here are four amendments that are being violated. Amendments one, four, five and six. Amendment one, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the rights of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government for a redress of grievances. While the government, while Congress doesn't restrict speech assembly or the right to petition, it made no effort to uphold the defense of these rights. Further, it stood by as these rights were abused by every emergency declaration in violation of Supreme Court rulings. By allowing federal contractors to disregard the Constitution, they violated this amendment. That's amendment one. Amendment four, the right of the people to secure, to be secure in their persons, houses, papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. By declaring every person a probable asymptomatic carrier, the federal government, the CDC, FDA, DHHS, they violated this amendment and enabled the reckless abuse that harmed countless individuals. Loss of life, liberty and livelihood has been a direct result. Amendment five, nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself nor be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. There has been no due process as the courts have unilaterally stipulated the epidemic or pandemic without a single effort to demonstrate beyond reasonable doubt that there is either. Further, while changing the definition of vaccine to include gene therapy, the courts have inappropriately applied Jacobson. Amendment six, in all criminal prosecutions, the accused shall enjoy the right to a speedy and public trial by an impartial jury of the state and jurisdiction wherein crime, the crime shall have been committed, which district shall have been previously ascertained by law and to be informed of the nature and cause of the accusation, to be confronted with the witness against him, to have compulsory process for obtaining witness in his behavior, in his favor, excuse me, and to have the assistance of counsel for his defense. No judicial standard has been applied to validate the false claims of SARS-CoV-2 causing COVID-19. Therefore, every derivative prosecution is in violation of the Sixth Amendment. No court has been willing to sit and consider the voluminous evidence of antitrust coercion and domestic terrorism and racketeering charges against FDA, CDC, NIAID, Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson and their accomplices. We are putting you on notice. That is more than just a handful of people in this room who will not, who will not recognize any treasonous mandates as legitimate according to our own persons. Instead, we will not comply so long as our rights continue to be violated in this way. We are once again, we're putting you on notice. This mandate is an act of treason and we, the people, will not comply.
Deborah McGrath, followed by Nicholas Roberts.
Hi, my name is Deborah McGrath. I'm a physical therapist here in Orange County as well as the surrounding counties. And I'm here to represent a countywide organization called Orange Strong, which we are a group of patriots that support our constitutional rights of life, liberty and pursuit of happiness. As stated on our Declaration of Independence, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. We have three requests for Irene Gelman, Commissioner of Health, Steve Newhouse County Executive and you, the county legislators. Requesting that you question authority and protect our citizens against fraud, force and coercion that violates our constitutional rights by standing up and refusing to enforce the vaccine mandates, to also remove the state of emergency and transparency of the COVID reporting, the VAERS reactions and breakthrough cases on the Department of Health website. We, the people of Orange County, believe that you, as county legislators, have an obligation to question authority for the safety and welfare of our community here in Orange County in reference to the mandating of vaccines, especially to our children, by opposing them until further investigation and research is underway by means of current clinical trials and ongoing litigation. I may or may not know, a Louisiana federal judge blocked the Biden vaccine mandate for healthcare workers nationwide. OSHA suspended, in addition, the enforcement of COVID-19 vaccine mandate for large businesses. And there is also current and ongoing litigation and research against the vaccine mandate for children. There is more data suggesting the vaccines do not keep you from contracting COVID or spreading COVID and natural immunity is being dismissed when there is significant data demonstrating that it is more effective than the vaccine. On the Orange County Department of Health website in reference to COVID-19 testing information, there's a link provided for the New York State Department of Health Commissioner Howard Zucker. That's where it takes you to. And quote, pursuant to 10 NYCRR 262, the CDC requires COVID-19 testing in schools which enables immediate identification of positive individuals even if they are asymptomatic so they can isolate and prevent further transmission. Test results are reported to the public health authority. Teachers and staff can opt out of mandatory weekly screening if they provide documentation of full vaccination. Schools must provide screening testing to the unvaccinated, but they don't mention the vaccinated with parental or guardian consent, which makes absolutely no sense and gives incorrect statistics for reporting truthful COVID-19 numbers to the Department of Health and to the public. There is much data that has surfaced proving that the vaccinated are equally spreading the virus as well as contracting the virus, so not screening and testing the vaccinated as well when they are asymptomatic makes absolutely no medical sense and is discrimination. Considering the CDC-guided schools, districts have the authority to decide how to implement the CDC guidance based on local conditions, needs and input from your local health department. So they work together. Ultimately, the decision to adopt certain mitigation measures will reside with the local circumstances unless otherwise required in this document or other relevant guidance, regulation or orders. Does it make sense to further destroy our economy, divide our citizens even further, increase mental health issues such as depression, anxiety, suicide, drug addiction, alcoholism, increase promiscuity, behavior caused by an increase in mental health issues and STDs secondary to the current state of fear mongery and force being pushed upon our citizens and completely dismissing our constitutional rights when there is such a high rate of recovery and survival? Remaining quiet and passive is not an option. Please stand up.
Nicholas Roberts.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for staying, unlike your colleague, she had something important to do. We do not believe there is a state of emergency based on the numbers here in Orange County. We would like the state of emergency removed as it is misinformation, possibly fraud. Real state of emergency is the unelected governor spewing out mandates which have short-staffed our hospitals and nursing homes to the point of bringing in the National Guard. In early, thank you. In early 2020, the NIH and the CDC changed cause of death rules resulting in a 90% overcount of COVID deaths. PCR test instruction manual issued by the CDC says a positive result does not actually mean there is an infectious virus nor that the COVID-19 virus is in the sample, much less distinguishes between any coronavirus. Delta and Omicron, see page 38 of the CDC-issued PCR test instruction manual. This can only lead to the conclusion that the PCR test is worthless as a diagnostic tool. PCR tests cannot distinguish between an infectious or non-infectious virus. It seems obvious that the pharmaceutical vaccine manufacturers, manufacturers, excuse me, colluded with the National Institute of Health and the CDC to use fraudulent death statistics and false positive PCR test results to push the sale of an injection of COVID vaccines into the general public, helping to gain access to billions of taxpayers' money and to vaccine profiteers. This is grand larceny on a massive scale. On December 14th of 2020, the WHO admitted in a memo that the high cycle threshold of PCR tests for the SARS-CoV-2 will result in false positives. During COVID, the increased, they increased the threshold on the tests. Threshold was raised from 35 cycles up to 70 cycles and reduced back down in January, which would make it appear that the vaccine works. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Christine McCormick, followed by Robert Medina.
Good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are asking for transparency of the COVID reporting on the DOH website for cases as well as adverse events from every healthcare institution that does testing and administers vaccines to include adverse events or reactions. County Executive Steve Newhouse dictates the COVID-19 reporting numbers from the DOH live. It is also listed on the website dashboard. We believe those numbers are inaccurate and would like full transparency of exactly where those numbers are coming from, such as name of the institution, contact person at the facility, a copy of the protocol they are following from the CDC and how they are instructed to report and what they are instructed to report should be, I'm sorry, should include definition of fully vaccinated, deaths of vaccinated versus unvaccinated and/or breakthrough cases of those vaccinated contracting COVID. For example, there are nursing homes, hospitals, walk-in medical clinics, private medical facilities that are not government-owned, schools, ambulatory vaccine vans, pharmacies that administer vaccines. And the question is, are they all reporting? If not, we demand that they do for accuracy of report, sorry, reported statistics. Why are breakthrough cases and VAERS adverse reactions not being reported by the healthcare institutions to the DOH for public reporting as well? According to the Centers for Medical and Medicaid Services, all adverse events from the vaccine is public information and should include breakthrough cases. Much of the data in reference to vaccine injuries is either being omitted, suppressed and/or not reported. We are asking that the COVID reporting protocols for the healthcare institutions, for the CDC and COVID vaccine adverse reaction protocols be transport, I'm sorry, be transparent on your Orange County DOH website for the community to view. You should be more concerned with our health and safety and not focused on whether or not this information being public would cause further vaccine hesitancy. There are serious side effects... There are serious side effects associated with the COVID-19 vaccination. According to the under-reported VAERS database, there have been over 18,000 deaths and more than 850,000 adverse reactions. This information creates uncertainty over the safety of the vaccinations that have been touted as safe and effective. The VAERS data also begs to question, do the risks of taking the vaccine outweigh the benefits? VAERS is co-administered by the CDC and the FDA, which are agencies of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. On their site, it states that healthcare providers who administer COVID-19 vaccines are required by law to report to VAERS the following after vaccination. Under the section, what are healthcare providers required to report to VAERS, I say, search it and see much of what is not being reported properly or at all. Three minutes doesn't afford me the time to elaborate on that. I'd like to remind you regarding the mandate, there are no long-term studies for any of these inoculations yet. There's an exorbitant amount of reported permanent injuries and deaths attached to all. On 10/5/1982, Johnson &amp; Johnson pulled Tylenol off the shelves because, most sadly, seven people were poisoned. They pulled millions and millions of product from the stores. Today, we are at over 18,000 deaths and close to a million reported permanent injuries due to a shot. People are being legally forced by mandate, not a law, not a legal law, to continue to, they have to take this shot and continue down a path that has been proven to maim and kill. Seven was the magic number with Tylenol, 25 dead, the number for the swine flu vaccine. What number has to be reached before we stop this madness?
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Ms. McCormick, thank you.
One from the Capitol at the very least.
This concludes your comments.
And not a governmental decision when it comes into our bodies.[710.32][710.32](APPLAUSE).
Robert Medina. Robert Medina.
Good evening, sir.
I just have some common sense questions that come up as red flags when it comes to the vaccine mandates. First one is why the coercion of gift certificates, financial incentives, scholarships to children? None of us, as children, when we got any vaccine, got anything. You understand that? What are we doing? Why are we going against our children? Why are we using this big stick-and-carrot routine to, against the least, the most vulnerable? That is the most dishonorable, disgusting thing I've seen.[768.82][768.82](APPLAUSE). Not to do anything about it, to have our children be at the brunt of this, and you guys sit here and be like, oh, it's a mandate, it's what the governor says, it's an emergency. We all know it's not an emergency, that's BS, okay? We all know it's money play within the government for you guys to get your honey pot stuff going, you know? We don't, we're not as stupid as you guys think that we are. You know, we see what you're doing, we see people on the phone, the whole meeting, not really caring what's going on. People are talking here.
Sir, please address individual legislators.
You're on your phone. Like, what are you doing? You know, if I was at a business meeting on my phone with my bosses.
Mr. Medina, please do not address individual legislators, please address the chair.
So there is an ICD-10 billable code, Z28.20, which is, it states immunization not carried out because of patient decision or unspecified reason. It's a billable code. So you're telling me that the governor has the power and authority to start switching up bill codes, or this bill code was illegal or something into some science that doesn't exist, says we can't use it anymore? Like, the lawyer here should be looking into that, because why do we have things in our medical billing to show things that we could do that the governor's trying to make illegal? You understand what I'm saying? Like, we all have rights, and the governor, through emergency powers, is trying to take over those rights? That's crazy. I see you're here, no advertisement of monoclonal antibody treatment sites here in Orange County. Governor Ron DeSantis in Florida has done an amazing job of reducing sickness, death, and hospitalizations, and they have a larger population than New York State, especially of the elderly. And it's shown that monoclonal has a higher percentage rate of efficacy than any vaccine. We don't even, we don't even know if the vaccine reduces transmission, but we're trying to mandate it. That is crazy. That is like lunacy, really.[912.82][912.82](APPLAUSE). This apparently reflects tensions, well, that's a.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Eileen Castaldo, followed by Joe Murtaugh.
Good evening.
I am a nurse practitioner, family nurse practitioner. I am one of the ones that is facing job loss, because I work for a government contractor, because I do not want to have the vaccine, even though I have natural immunity, just to let you know that. And I have heard some of you in other meetings say that you don't understand why we are making such a fuss over this particular vaccine, that we have always, healthcare workers and other children and everyone, have always been mandated to have vaccines. It's just one of those things. Well, I'm going to try and explain that to you. We have done our research, and there are others that have done their research, as I wish you could have done before accepting money to become vaccine pushers.
Yes.[979.73][979.73](APPLAUSE).
Number one, they are still experimental. And then, the COVID injections are not even vaccines, they are gene therapies. They encode the spike protein messenger RNA into our cells, which take over our cells' protein encoding mechanism to produce more spike proteins. This technology is, quote, "the first of its kind to be used at this scale," quoted from PBS News article. On the Moderna website, they state that this tech is, quote, "an operating system for our cells," and, quote, "the software of life." I, for one, am trusting the software God gave me. Statements from a below-referenced research article state that SARS-CoV-2 RNA can be reverse-transcribed and integrated into the host cell genome chimera, which are combined viral and human DNA, can be formed when the mRNA code is inserted into our cells. They are, however, now in all of our cells, and our immune systems can react against our cells, not just the spike proteins. And they have been causing autoimmune disorders, neurodegenerative defects, and inflammation throughout the body. It has been found from autopsies performed on post-vaccination deaths and COVID-disease deaths, that spike proteins concentrate particularly in the ovaries, testes, brain, and heart, with unknown long-term effects. But evidence of early damage is found in the ignored vaccine-adverse event reporting system. There is no knowledge or long-term studies that ascertain if and when our cells will ever stop producing the spike proteins. The research is still ongoing. We are the research subjects. The study done on the children was only two months long, on a total of only 2,534 children, with 1,450 of them receiving the actual vaccine. One of them did get myocarditis, and the number will statistically increase as more children are vaccinated. Now, there is a New York State bill looming, and if passed, will force this experimental genetic therapy on our healthy, innocent children in order to obtain a public education. When would you see the genetic defects? How long did it take for diethylstilbestrol? And do you remember thalidomide? How long did that take? It was a few generations, maybe. Please help us stop these mandates. Please help us save our innocent children.[1136.73][1136.73](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Murtaugh, thank you, followed by Dana Miller.
So I'm speaking here to, I see a lot of stuff that's not making sense that's going on. I'm trying to summarize some of the thoughts of the other people that have helped me here, my friends. And I'm here, and I'd like the Orange County Legislature to do the same, to do what they can to understand the science, the mandates, the vaccinations, the whole, I think Andrea said it best, that this is not the, we're waking up in the United States that we didn't come up in. So I don't know how much sense I'm making, but I'd like the Orange County Legislature to help protect us from several frauds that I think have been perpetrated on we, the people, many frauds. The first fraud was 14 days to stop the spread.[1213.01][1213.01](LAUGHTER).
Yeah, right.
I think another terrific fraud was lockdowns are good for a population's health. Then I think this other one, and it's, I believe, been documented by the CDC, PCR tests determine COVID cases. You know, treatment with remdesivir, as Maria brought up, has the best course of actions for very ill people. Hydroxychloroquine doesn't work. They commissioned a study in Brazil to overdose all these people on hydroxychloroquine, and so, you know, I gotta think that that's, that that and that ivermectin is horse medicine. And this is coming from, you know, our federal and state government, our three-letter agencies, and our one-sided media, they're perpetrating fraud against we, the people, all of us, legislatures, laypeople, people in this room. And another, another good fraud was, the only way out of this is vaccines. And boy, did that push, you know, I first heard that from Jim Cramer on Wall, you know, the Wall Street guy, and, you know, he was already invested in Moderna, I believe. So, anyway, so whatever is in this legislature's power to help protect we, the people from our medical health and from these frauds that are being perpetrated on us, if you would please, please try to do the best thing for we, the people.[1333.51][1333.51](APPLAUSE).
We address you today regarding your monuments of failures in leadership and protection of the fundamental rights of your constituents. We, the people of the state and county, have called, we have emailed, we have protested, we have shown up at school board, council meetings, and committee hearings. As one voice, we demand you to preserve and protect our freedoms. We offer ample opportunities for you to address these issues, yet you stood by idly. While tyrannical government and unaccountable federal government have destroyed our state, we demand immediate answers for your inaction while you continue to utilize, and we will continue to utilize, all forms of communication to call attention to your failures and promote your impending removals.
Yeah.
We determine that if you have not stood up for our freedoms, you are part of the wrong. You have a choice to stand with us and fight to secure our freedoms. The governor, the secretary of state, and legislator will now watch while we idly, while we peacefully remove you. How have you failed us? You have stood by while jobs, schools, weddings, funerals, entertainment was shut down, while thousands marched in our street. You stood by while tyrants attacked the most basic rights to live and work freely, using fear and tyranny to lock us in our homes and attack our rights to bodily autonomy, and watching the unvaccinated be discriminated against. You stood by while our kids were deprived of their education. School boards were recessed early, and parents threatened with arrest. The FBI weaponized against their concerned parents, labeling them as domestic terrorists. You stood by while we locked down almost half of our small businesses for good, while Amazon recorded record profits. You stood by while our secretary of state and New York State Board of Elections allowed us to vote on outdated voting machines, not certified since 2017. We refuse to stand by and watch the same voting machines be used in 2022. You stood by while elected officials called our constituents conspiracy theorists, while they questioned massive and serious and irrefutable security issues in the 2020 election. You stood by while Cuomo enacted policy that unnecessarily sent COVID-positive patients to nursing homes, causing over 13,000 deaths. You stood by and let the FDA bait and switch the scheme, coercing the citizens of New York to take an emergency-use authorized gene therapy drug as an approved vaccine, legally known as corotary, which is not even available in the U.S. You stood by as New Yorkers are faced with losing their jobs or take an experimental vaccine. Perhaps the most appalling, you stood by and allowed the same corrupt FDA, CDC, and NIH to ban, ban proven effective treatments for COVID in favor of more experimental treatments which are actually killing people. Now, you may resign or watch us remove every one of you. Your time is up. We, the people of New York.
That concludes, folks, please sit down. This particular meeting is the actual last meeting of the year that we will all be together in person. As you know, the end-of-the-year meeting is really when we do all the tax resolutions, and due to recent state laws, that date has been pushed back, and we will be meeting for that purpose virtually on December 22nd via Teams. So at this point, since it is the last legislative meeting that we will all be together, and we're going to start 2022 with a new group of people, not too many different, but we do have two individuals here this evening that will be retiring from the legislature. And I would just like to recognize legislator Jim Kulisek, who has served in District Four of the city of Newburgh, four, six, I'm sorry, sorry, Lou. And I'm looking right at it and seeing. But you did two terms, you did a term, and then we had a little rest period in between, then you came back, right?
I was there in 2016, now I'm not in that back for a little bit.
Well, it's been a pleasure working with you, Jim, and I thank you very much, and I wish you well in all of your future endeavors.[1636.32][1636.32](APPLAUSE). And also legislator John Vero, our majority leader currently, he will be leaving us as well. He decided not to run for office, as did Mr. Kulisek, and it's been a pleasure working with you, John. We've had a lot of really heated issues that we walked through together, and we were able to do a lot of great things together here in Orange County, and I just want to wish you all the best. I know you're not going too far away, and you'll be back, you know, here again, we'll see both of you, hopefully. I know you're involved in various different things in your community, so, John, I do wish you well as you embark on the new chapter of your life. It's been a pleasure working with you, and both of you, so I just wanted to recognize that.[1689.88][1689.88](APPLAUSE). And without any further comment, unless somebody wants to say anything, I will.
I do.
Who said that?
Chair, thank you very much, Chairwoman, for the kind words. I have three minutes. First of all, I'd like to thank the voters of District 10 for electing me and re-electing me, and by the margin I did. I appreciate your support, and I hope I didn't let you down there. Thank you very much, Chair. I also want to thank our legislative staff. Clerk Jean Rampin, you've done a wonderful job. A lot of people don't understand, you've got our back a lot of times, and we do need a little help. Kelly Bradley, you've done an excellent job, too. I'm going to miss the two of you. Dorian Griffith, who's not here, she's downstairs on the second floor. Carrie Anne Hamill, same thing there, they've done a wonderful job for all of legislators. Etse, Legislative Council, thank you very much for everything you've done for us. And also Antoinette Reed, who was there a number of years before you, she was an invaluable resource as well, as you have been proven to be also. One thing, I also want to thank the leaders. When I first came in eight years ago, Steve Bresch and Dennis Simmons were my go-to guys. And I watched the other leaders, too, the chairman, Lee Benton, Barry Chaney, Kevin Hines, Katie, Michael Angostakis, Mac Amo, they ran good meetings. And I just learned so much by attending the meetings early. We didn't have the luxury of being on video, so you couldn't stay and watch me, I had to be here physically, and that was a good idea, too. The big four, I can't say, I can't believe I was saying something about the big four, meaning County Executive Steve Newhouse is number one guy. Three minutes. Three minutes. And he's done a wonderful job during a bad time. We came in on iffy times eight years ago, and he likes to do the analogy of turning the aircraft carrier around, and we did that. We came in through some issues, and we solved them. We're here in a building now, we didn't know what we were going to do with it at the time. District Attorney Dave Hoover, he's probably one of the best in the state as well. We probably have the best sheriff, Sheriff Carl DeBois. Andy Rabbis done a wonderful job bringing us back from the outskirts of Valley View back to the government center, and Kelly Esquio will as well. I've had the luxury of sitting next to Jimmy Kulisek for eight years, too. I'm going to miss that. And I'm also going—every time I hear the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to miss Mike Paducah saying, "God bless America" at the end. And the other thing I'm going to miss is Barry Chaney and Paula Skavitz, and myself, the Three Amigos on WTBQ every Thursday morning. That was a lot of fun, and I realize a lot of people do listen to that, and we got some feedback on there as well. But overall, I would say thank you very much. I've enjoyed my eight years here, and gee, went awful fast. And I also want to wish Glenn Ellis, who's replacing me, good luck in the future as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Are there any other comments? Oh, I would like to wish everybody a very happy, happy and blessed holiday, and I would ask that the legislators kind of linger a little bit, because we do have a little something for John and Jim. So, if you can stay, we would appreciate it. So, at that, walkers. So, at this, I will entertain a motion to close. Second, have a very happy end of 2021, and hopefully 2022 is a lot better. We've really survived a lot of challenges, so thank you, and thank you all for attending.